I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Please stand to salute the nation's flag. In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Fleer, and Barney. In addition, Township Manager Don Januso, Jack King Assistant Township Manager and Director of Planning, Sean Bukowinski Chief of Police, Bill Bodorf Director of Public Works, Engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers, and Solicitor Gretchen Moore. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General Township comments or questions will be addressed after Board of Supervisors discussion of old business. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Do you want me to read the... Last month I got yelled at for not reading the announcements. I'll read them quickly. Cecil Township Parks Recreation Board will sponsoring a 12th Annual Touch a Truck Event on Saturday, May 13th from 11:00 to 2:00 at Cecil Park. Cecil Township Historical Society will join the Jefferson College Historical Society at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, May 17th, 2023, at the Frank Saris Public Library in Cannonsburg. Clay Kilgore will present information on how and why Washington and Jefferson College is located in Washington and not Cannonsburg. Jordan Tax Service will be at the Municipal Building the following days and times to collect the 2023 Township Taxes. Friday, May 19th from 9:00 to noon, Thursday, May 25th from 1:00 to 4:00, and Wednesday, May 31st from 9:00 to noon. The municipal offices will be closed on Monday, May 29th in observance of Memorial Day. The offices will open for business at 8:00 AM on Tuesday, May 30th, 2023. Moving on to discussion items. Number one is an update on the Public Works project.
So there's activity going on. I've been trying to get the...
Can you hear him?
I'm sorry. I'll...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. So I sent the board along with my report this month. We're gonna issue a monthly Public Works Report on the activities. So just for everybody's information, all the contracts that were last awarded have been sent out to those contractors, including Electrical Fuel Station, Mechanical Plumbing and Fire Protection. Yule, who's the general contractor, has mobilized to the site. They've completed about 80 percent. That says 90 percent, but they've completed about 80 percent of the paving that's in their contract by their subcontractor. I understood it did pretty... They did pretty well. The idea of that paving is that they will be prepared to receive the building and be able to work from a paved surface and not make a super mess up there at the site. The shell and foundation permit package permit was issued by the building inspector here in the township. We submitted for electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permits that are required from the building inspector, so that's been submitted. We've coordinated with one of the landowners up there along Clinger Road related to bringing in the three-phase power through West Penn Power. The first load of metal building materials was delivered earlier in April. There's a pay app on the agenda tonight. There's a different number for that after we discussed with Bill. So there's a pay app tonight for that paving that's taking place on the site. And finally, we just assisted Don with some numbers related to the project completion. Upcoming tasks, we see Yule beginning the foundation installation is actually scheduled to start this week. They'll deliver the next part of the building by mid-May. On the site utilities, Stewart's supposed to start this week on the sewer line extension. We're coordinating on the water extension with P. American Water Company. Columbia Gas is also to start to bring in the gas line to the site, and West Penn will be working on the three-phase power. And then, just really to get the contracts executed on the remaining subcontractors, do a pre-construction meeting with them, and they start to get submittals and materials on procurement, so they start getting things in, so they'll be ready to keep the construction going. Because of the early spring start, there were some soft spots in the subgrade that were encountered. We had anticipated some of this, and there was sufficient quantities in the contract. So we've done everything within the contract limits and the schedules of values. And just to point out that there are some lead times for larger HVAC equipment. As soon as we get the contractors in for that equipment, we're gonna try to get submittals and get them to purchase that stuff. So that's the... That's the update. Also, on the agenda tonight, I thought this was an interesting map to look at. This is a drone flight of the Public Works site. As you see it now, we're using this for the topsoil bidding contract. This is Clinger Road here to the right. This is the main access, which is now paved into the site. This will be the Public Works Building. Will be located in this area, and again, there's paving all around here. And then this is the storage area related to the site. You can see the pond here in the rear, and these are basically slopes. So really, this is the other developed site that's up there and kind of ready to go for the future that came out of the first part of the work, but I thought this was a good photo to take a look at. And there also is an item on the agenda tonight for payment to Stewart Contracting. We're paying them down to everything except their retainage. I think there's about 70,000 being held, 5% of their contract. Minor punch list item to complete with Stewart on closing them out, and they will be done on their contract. Did I miss anything?
Dan, just to a real quick update on the beginning, the start of the foundation work. That's been put off until next Monday.
Okay.
Due to the weather this week.
Anything else you wanna bring up that I forgot?
That's the only update I have.
Okay.
The kickoff meeting was held today with the subcontractors.
That's all for the Public Works. If there's any questions.
Dan.
Yes, sir.
I think you need to clarify that. That is not Mike Stewart doing the sewer lines in that.
Right, there's two different Stewards. It's his brother doing the sewer contract. Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
I think the next one up is the McConnell Trails Project. Andy Hutchinson's here tonight. I saw, basically, they're back in to obtain approval again for Phase 3B. The board had already approved this. This is just a reapproval so that the plan can be now recorded. They posted the securities related to this. So if there's any questions or anything related to this, there's also a bond release related to Phase 3A that's on the agenda that we've made a recommendation for also.
Once again, we got another pond that's just filling up. And I just drove through there. There are no sacks in none of the inlets.
None of the... What phase, Ron?
The whole plan. There's not one silt sack in one inlet up there.
Okay. I'm not sure that they would be in... I'm not sure where they're called for on this particular plan.
Well, that's a DEP regulation.
It's whatever their ENS control plan says. I'll check that out. I mean, I'm just... You're saying for the parts of the plan that are already developed, or?
Not one anywhere in the whole plan.
That's not true.
Okay, well, I mean, Ron, I'll be glad to check the plan. If you see anything like that, give me a call.
I just thought, no, because I brought it to my attention.
I think what Andy's saying is that when these ponds are used as sediment basins, they'll usually let... They won't require filters around all the inlets. That's not a standard. If you have a pond, it's not necessarily required, but we'll double-check the plans and see if they're...
Yeah, but they're also required to drain out.
The ponds?
Yes.
Over a period of time, yeah, but they're...
Well, the one pond's been up there since day one.
But they hold... But you're gonna see water holding in a sediment pond because it's gotta have time to settle out until they convert it. Once they convert it and they're all done with construction, there won't be water in the ponds.
It's backing up in the pipes, in the storm pipe, because it's so overfilled. Soon as it rains, it overflows right over the spillway. No, not that one. The one right behind the apartment sign there. I mean, kids were swimming in there last summer. Little kids throwing rocks in there. Maybe Piatt don't worry about if a kid drowns, but I do.
I think that's all I have for the discussion items. Cindy?
Don, discuss future... I didn't add that. Discuss future capital road improvement projects.
Yeah, I mentioned that. I think I talked to every board member, and eventually, we have some major projects that everybody wants to see done. It's a question of financing whenever, when we can do it. We know most of these projects, we won't be able to do just out of our general funding, just the general road budget. But we just need some prices so we know what they're gonna be. Gateway can give us some estimates on the projects, and then we can try to fit them into our financing. But until he gives us some numbers, we need to...
What do you mean, fit them into our financing?
Well, we're always working on our budgets, and we need to know what kind of money we need so that we can plan for the future for these. And we can't plan anything until we know, get a rough idea what they're gonna cost. We can't guess at them. Dan, Gateway can give us estimates on this so we know the magnitude of the projects. I have no clue what some of them are gonna cost. I mean, they might be really high-priced items, and we just don't know that. Or they might be something that we can't afford to swing in one or more of them in a, you know, general fund budget. We just don't know.
But aren't we getting... I mean, you know this, prices change monthly. So if we run the prices now, and then we're not gonna finance them this year, and then...
But he does... A lot of them require quantities and things like that. Once he has those numbers, the quantities won't change. You're right, then we need an update just on current, like yardage prices or things like that. We don't know if these are $500,000 projects, million-dollar projects, until we get an idea, and that's the...
So I would suggest to you that bring this up in August, and then we can get prices in September. And then we know in the budget season, September, October, November, whether we can add some of them to our road project for 2024, or whether this would be a future financing project.
Well, we know they're gonna be future projects.
So I just... I'm not opposed to planning. I think it's important, but I also don't wanna see us spend money now to get pricing, only have to spend money again in the fall to get updated pricing. So why don't you just hold this? We'll do this, bring it up again as a discussion. I am in August. We'll get pricing in September, October, and then we can decide, you know?
But we're talking about getting another bond issue for the Public Works Building.
Yeah, I mean...
That's the building. That ain't the road project.
Now is not...
You asked me if I wanted to float a $3 million bond to do these projects. I said no.
The bond issue can be used for more than one project. I'm just saying we don't know if we can roll it in or not, because we know we can do this next bond issue without raising taxes.
We know.
That's the plan, and we might be able to roll a project in too without it.
We can't... I don't think, and I don't wanna speak for the board, so please jump in at any point. There's not board support to take out additional funds more than we need outside the Public Works with interest rates, the prices, or interest rates at, you know, what they are today. It's not smart to take out additional money outside of what we need. So if, you know, again, in 2024, interest rates, or even in the fall, interest rates significantly start to go down, then we take it, we have a conversation about floating bonds. But right now, outside of what we need to finish a project we already started, I think we would be foolish, financially foolish, to take out an additional bond. We would be forced to raise taxes. Does anybody disagree with that?
I disagree. They would be forced to raise taxes.
You know that we can cover, based on the estimate, you know that we can cover the additional to cover the Public Works Building. You know that.
I know that, and I don't know what we can cover in here, if any. Maybe we can't do any of them.
But maybe we don't need a bond. Maybe we get to the road program in the fall, and we realize that we can do some of these additional projects without taking out a bond. Why would we take out a loan now with interest rates as high as they are? Or spend money with Gateway when it's not something we're gonna do in May, June, July, August?
For two good reasons. When you take out a bond, the costs are about the same, whether you take out a smaller bond or a larger bond. In the second place, we don't know what these projects end up getting kicked on the road, and they end up getting more expensive anyway. So the longer we wait... So I mean, if you've heard already that there's no board support, then there isn't.
A perfect example is, we are estimating our building coming in that. And it's gonna be the same thing. If you get prices on these roads, they're gonna come in a lot higher.
Right. And to clarify, when you're saying the costs don't change, you're right. The cost for the... Or the fees to take out the bond don't change, but the interest rate on the bond is gonna be high. I just...
Prices will increase in the fall. As contractors get loaded up into the fall season, your prices on road construction, everything else is gonna escalate. You get your best prices in the springtime when contractors are hungry for work. That's when you put the stuff out. We just need to obtain a priority list, get a cost estimate, and knock them off one by one off the list.
Yeah, I agree with Frank. I think it's smart, as soon as practical, to generate a list of those capital projects that need to be addressed, that are big-ticket items. And generating a engineering construction cost estimate would give you an idea of what we have sitting out in front of us as far as capital improvement projects. I know there's an interest in completing South Point Boulevard. That's a big-ticket item, I know, because the work that's involved, the scope of the work that has to be done out there. There's a culvert over in Walnut Street over in Mews that he's replaced. We have the Coomer Road intersection. I think there's a couple other small projects. And I think it's smart, as soon as possible, to plan ahead for these so that we can phase these into our future capital budgets and our budget requests when they come up in the fall.
So let's do this. Dan, Bill, and whoever else on the board, work on the list.
Okay.
And then bring it next month, and we'll say, these are the lists of high, we believe to be high-ticket items. And then we can look at and see, and then we can talk about an engineering. We keep getting ahead of ourselves on stuff. Before we even talk about engineering costs, let's write a list.
Right.
Because you might think of something different than Frank's thinking of, and it's different than Tom's thinking of.
Right. And truthfully, it's good to have a number that you can put out there and say, well, ballpark, this is what we think right now, based on current costs, what it might be.
I'm hesitant to do that, only because we've been burned in the past before. We've banked on a number, and not just on one project, pretty much every project that's come before us, where we get a cost estimate, and then we plan for stuff based on that cost estimate, and it's too old. So, look, I understand making a list. I think that makes sense, making a plan for the future. But let's get cost estimates close to the time, closer to the time that we're going to actually do the project, so that we aren't saying, okay, Coomer Road's gonna cost us $1 million, and it actually comes in at 3:00.
Right. So I agree with that, and I think the thing that I'm most interested in is scoping these projects, generating the quantities, and defining the scope of work that we're looking at doing. Those unit pricing, that's gonna change. But I think if we develop the scope, and that's what I'm mainly speaking to, is developing the scope of work for the work, for these projects that need to be done, so that we can quantify exactly, you know, tonnages, lengths, and stuff like that, so that we know in the future, we have that number at hand, that we know the depth of reconstruction that has to be performed.
But I think that's a... I agree with that, but I think that's a different ask than what Tom was asking for. You were asking about financing.
That's the scope, that's what Dan will do for us. Figure out all the quantities and what needs to be done on the project. That's the work.
I don't wanna put... The only thing I don't wanna do is put a price out there. I'm okay with quantities. I'm okay with scope.
Scoping the projects.
Yep. I'm okay with all of that.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend, is scope the project.
I'd like to see Frank involved in that process, too.
Me, too.
So does the rest of the board agree with that?
That's fine.
Dan said he'll take care of us.
What does that mean?
There's... What I explained was that there's a lot of information that we have already available through GIS, other mapping tools available, LiDAR imaging and stuff like that, that we can very quickly scope out the projects. So it's not a... We're not gonna send survey crews out to do work on preliminary projects till you know that they're gonna really be a project. So what you do is you get into a schematic phase, make sure everybody's comfortable with the scope, and then you have a really good handle on where you're going. And then if you decide to go further with it, you refine the plan further, and then you put your numbers to it.
Yep.
At the time you wanna bid it.
I just don't want to, like, Public Works, like Ron said, is a, you know, perfect example, where, you know, we got ahead of ourselves on the pricing of that, and now we're having to take out a second bond. I just, I don't wanna put a number out to the public or to ourselves that we're banking on that's very likely to change. Scope and quantities are different. So, okay. Moving on to resolutions. 76, 2023, consider application for payment number two for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility general construction project in the amount of $521,432.48 to UHL Construction Company.
Yeah, this is the one I described in the discussion. Bill's reviewed this. Kevin from our office has reviewed this, and we're recommending the payment to Yule.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Four, one. 77, 2023, consider application for payment number 11 for the retainage on Cecil Township Public Works Facility Early Site Package Project in the amount of $21,330.35 to Stewart Contracting.
This is just, takes them to 5% retainage on the... 5% retainage on the project, so we are also recommending this payment. Punch list has been put in play, and we get a maintenance pond, and we'll close him out hopefully by next month.
Dan, where in the project will the, like, the silt socks be removed in the final finished grade and right to our Clinger Road and things like that? What's part of that?
So that responsibility will move on to the general contractor? So that we... There's a paper that's assigned. It's a... It's through the permit that we have for the project. You have to be a co-permittee, so Stewart will come off, and you'll go on as the co-permittee.
Make a motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five, one. Consider application for payment number three for the work completed to date for the South Point Montour Trail Connection Project in the amount of $126,781.90 to Stewart Contracting.
Again, this is the project that was done through grant funds. I just threw one picture in here. If you haven't seen the trail, it is nearly complete. He has some paving yet to do, and this estimate will take him down to the point where he's still owed about, I believe, $90,000 left to close out the contract. So again, we'll punch this out. He's gotta get some seeding over there, get this done, but there's a substantial amount of work that's been completed.
It looks phenomenal. I actually walked on it the other day. It looks great. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No.
Did you say no, Darlie?
No.
79, 2022, consider the second release of financial security posted for the installation of public and private improvements for O'Connell Trails Phase 3A from $401,217.30 to $277,824.80, a total reduction of $123,392.50, as recommended by the Township Engineer.
I understand Ron's concerns. We'll get back to the board with a report on this. But this is money that is due based upon the developer's agreement and the quantities and so forth that have been submitted. So I would recommend this payment, and again, I will report back to the board as soon as tomorrow on any issues over there. I've not been notified by the Conservation District. I get all the reports back from Liz on the Conservation District. I've not seen any issues coming from the site, from the district, but we'll get out there and get a look at things again, too, to check the ENS.
Dan, you know about this retention pond? Is it...
Is that the... That's the one that there's been some issues in flooding some of the neighbors?
Yeah, it continues to run a stream of water down on the Muse Bishop Road for a couple months now. I was told that the contractor will repair this. I mean, I don't know. Either he drains it, puts a liner, or what his means are repairing this. But, you know, in heavy rains in the past, it has caused flooding issues down on Muse Bishop Road to some of our residents. Bill went up, cleaned, opened some of the inlets, him and Renato. You know, it's relieved it somewhat, but I think the issue needs to be addressed. Joe, do you have any... You got any feedback from the contractor?
I know there was that one area there that they had put some bentonite on to try to plug the holes in it. I thought that was successful, but apparently it hasn't been. So I'll have to get out there and get back on them about getting something to resolve the problem.
Okay, Joe, thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll... Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
Four, one. 80, 2023, consider reapproval of Phase 3B McConnell Trails. The developer proposes now to record the plan and reapprove as required to limit, or I'm sorry, due to the time limit for recording having elapsed. The Phase 3B plan consists of 33 single-family lots, stormwater management facility, and open space.
Yeah, so this is the remaining single-family lots in the plan that lead up to Burnside Road. Nothing other than to report that the securities are in place, and they're ready to record the plan and the developer's agreement signed, so I'd recommend the reapproval of the plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. No.
No.
Three, two. 81, 2023, consider a donation of $500 to the Cecil American Legion to help offset the cost of their Memorial Day luncheon to be held Monday, May 29th, 2023, after the ceremony. This community event is open to the public.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
82, 2023, consider appointing Jack King as interim zoning officer. For those of you that don't know, Liz Ross, our zoning officer, had a baby a week ago, and she is a bundle of joy and the cutest little thing you'd ever see, right? So she's on maternity leave, so Jack's gonna step in as the interim zoning officer, because we have to formally appoint one until Liz comes back from maternity leave, so...
Second.
I have a comment before we vote on this.
Sure.
Will Jack receive appropriate compensation for the added responsibilities he will undertake as an interim zoning officer?
I don't think they can hear you.
In addition...
They can't hear you. Talk into your microphone.
Pardon me?
They can't hear you. Talk into your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Will Jack receive the appropriate compensations for the additional responsibilities he will undertake as an interim zoning officer in addition to his regular daily duties?
So this is a personnel matter, so we can discuss it in executive session after. So do you wanna table this while we discuss it, or do you wanna appoint him?
I think we should.
Okay, that's fine. We can't.
You still have to be appointed, whether...
I think so, too. I understand. I understand, but what if she would vote yes if we do, or no, if we... You know what I mean? I'm giving her the opportunity to make that choice. I'm giving her the opportunity to make that choice. So is there a motion to approve this and then we can discuss the?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I want to know if he's going to have the appropriate compensation.
That's what I was afraid of. It's still passed though. Ron, did you vote yes?
I don't know what I'm voting on.
I'm sorry?
Don't know what I'm voting on. You ain't saying whether they're going to give more money or not.
Well, you, we would have to take a vote on that. Right now, we're just voting to appoint him.
Aye.
Okay, so it's four, two. Are you, nothing abstaining, voting no? What are you doing, Darlene? Are you abstaining or voting no?
I'm voting no.
Okay, so four, one on that and then we can discuss in executive session compensation. Um, eighty-three, twenty-twenty-three, consider the Board of Supervisors' minutes from the Monday, April third, twenty-twenty-three regular monthly meeting.
Make a motion. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Five, zero. Eighty-four, twenty-twenty-three, consider the general fund invoices from April first through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
I also have a comment on this one.
Sure.
I vote no until all three of the volunteer fire departments pass due utility bills and fire equipment purchases are paid on time. We cannot incur any more late invoices with penalties and/or shut-off notices.
Okay, so I would communicate that with the fire chief and make sure that we're receiving them from the fire companies in a timely manner.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that according to the invoices, there's a lot, a lot, a lot of past due utility bills for the volunteer fire department. And the fire trucks, the fire truck wasn't paid on time. They incurred, uh, late invoice penalties and/or there were shut-off notices for the utilities in the fire departments.
Have you?
You're sure of that?
Pardon me?
You're sure of that?
Well, we all.
Not from the audience. Go ahead. Uh, it's, Darlene, he asked you a question and then we'll draw, he can step to the microphone if he wants to speak.
Okay, well, we all got that email from Denny Birdie, correct? All of our supervisors got that email.
So, so Darlene, here's.
So March sixteenth, we shot, we received a shut-off notice from Columbia Gas. This is a second gas shut-off notice that we have received. The first being in January. Invoices shut-off notice was submitted to Don Genuzzo on Friday, March seventeenth.
Okay, okay, okay.
For investigation and payment.
Okay, so here's what I'm going to tell you. Before we're publicly saying that we're getting late fees and paying things late, I would encourage you to have a conversation with Don, Mac and Cindy. And, and verify that because right now you're making an accusation and you're saying essentially that our employees aren't paying things on time. And I can tell you that's not the case. You're reading one side of the story. I understand what you're talking about. I received the same email. Unlike you who came to the public with it, I had a conversation with Don and Cindy and Mac and they provided me with the facts. I also had a conversation with Denny Birdie and Melissa Birdie. So I would encourage you, instead of coming to the public and making it seem like there's some sort of drama or conspiracy, that you have conversations.
I'm not making a drama conspiracy. I was looking at the open invoices and from the dates that they receive them and the date paid, there was a lot of time elapsed.
Do you have Don, Cindy or anybody's phone number?
Pardon me?
Do you have Don, Cindy or Mac's phone number?
I have Don's phone number.
Have you been in the building since you noticed that?
Yes.
Have you asked any, before you brought this to the public, have you asked any of them?
No, I have not.
Okay. I would suggest that you have a conversation with them because what you're, the accusation that you're making in the public is unfounded. That's all I'm saying. Moving on. Is there, has there, let's do, make a motion. Is there a motion to approve the invoices? Sorry, I forgot where we were.
I make a motion.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Before we move on to citizens' general comments, um, hold on, can I? So I'll let, I just received this today and a call from John Alan Koski who's cleaning up the ABB, who's working to clean up the ABB property. Um, I'll leave it all for you guys to read it. All that they're asking for is that when we were doing it under the, the decree, it required like a certain number of public meetings. They don't need to do that anymore because it's a private corporation that's doing the cleanup. Um, so they want to work with Gretchen in order to make sure that that requirement is officially gone, which I think is smart. It'll help them to move faster. They've hit a few bumps in the road, um, along the way for the cleanup and they're finally making some progress. Um, it was not an agenda item, so I'm going to open it up for public comment. Um, but I don't want to have, make him wait a whole other month for this and slow down the process again. So if anybody has any questions about it, it's simply a legal letter. We've already signed off on the, um, that's the word, we've signed off on the decree. Like, we've given them the, we've taken ourselves out of it is what I'm trying to say.
Right, there's been a final settlement and we're off of the decree with the DEP. I, I looked at this letter briefly. It basically just memorializes the series of events that you all have lived through, um, you know, culminating in, in the settlement agreement and getting off the consent decree with the DEP.
I did have a, a meeting with John Allen, uh, I forget, a couple of weeks ago. Um, they're moving along, which is great. Uh, it's good for the public. Um, he's hope, he does have some potential tenants for ABB, for some of the property up in ABB. But he's, he hit a few bumps in the road that needed to be, um, cleared. A couple with the DEP and a couple with, uh, PA American Water. So he's working through those, um, but i- it's making progress, which is good. Um, if, there's no public comment or question, okay. Can you, is there a microphone? Sorry. Do we know where, hold on, hang on one second. Do we know where the microphone went?
Jack.
Thank you. Kathy Pickford, Sixty Wilson Avenue. Um, I have to say something because I was a little bit appalled back there on how you spoke to another fellow supervisor in the public.
Hold on, is it related?
Just let me finish, please.
No, no, hold on. Is it related to what we're talking about, the ABB letter?
No, you said present comments.
No, we're still talking about this. Stand right there, don't move and then we can, we can talk. Um, does any, so if there's any public comments specifically on this letter about ABB? No? Okay, so we have to take a vote to add it to the agenda. All we're doing is authorizing Gretchen to work with John Alan Koski's attorney in order to clean this up. So we have to take one vote to add it to the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So it's been added to the agenda. Now we're going to take a motion to actually allow her to do it. Do I have a motion?
So, I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed as five, zero. Thank you. Okay, now public comment.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm under the impression, we residents, we're all adults and it's okay if we hear the bad stuff as long as the good stuff. So I don't know why a supervisor bringing up a question has to be said, well, you chose to do it in public where I chose to do it in private. I don't think that should be a distinction. There are five supervisors here. We want the opinion of all five because we elected all five. And some of them may voted for this one and not for this one. That doesn't matter. You're there representing us and we are entitled to know all the information, the good, the bad and the ugly. We're all adults, we can handle it. We know how finances work. We all have finances from home. Everything doesn't have to be perfect and everything doesn't have to be kept such a secret. And I have to say, like, today, when, uh, Gateway Engineers was up.
Can I, hang on a second.
When Gateway Engineers was up here speaking.
I address what you just said and then I went, then you can talk about it. So put yourself in the shoes of our township employees. I've sat in this seat now for ten years where certain board members have used this podium to make it appear as if township employees aren't doing the job in which they were hired to do.
See now, I didn't take that from that conversation at all.
That's what I did.
Yeah, but see, I didn't take it that way.
So you.
I just took it as somebody asking a question. You know, I think that sometimes we go overboard, overthinking things when it was just a simple question. At least it was to me. Okay? And I noticed like today, when, um, he was up here speaking, you spent most of the time talking to Gretchen Moore. Instead of concentrating on, if there's a speaker here at the stadium, at the podium, all attention from everybody at this thing should be on that person. Not talking amongst each other, which I have seen over and over again. Same thing with chairperson. I personally think that should be a rotation. There are five supervisors that represent the township. Let's get somebody else's opinion and not what you decide at your private meetings or your board meetings or whatever you have. Because I know you can't bring that stuff up.
Stop, stop right there. So I don't have private meetings and, wait.
I have private meetings.
You just said I.
No, I didn't.
You literally just did. If I could record the tape, I'd record the tape.
Oh, yeah, well, no, you misunderstood what I said. What I said, uh, we don't need to know what goes on in your private board meetings. I belong to a lot of organizations.
Don't have private board meetings.
Where we discuss the business of the thing. We don't need to be privy to that. I'm fine with that. I don't expect you to come in and talk about that private stuff. Personnel issues and that. We don't need to know that.
We don't have private board meetings with the exception of what we go to executive session to talk about, which we announce to the public, first of all. Second of all, it, I can't, when I was talking to Gretchen, I get reports, as do all the other board members.
It just doesn't look good. It's my.
I get reports, as do all the other board members, every month. I had already read through and asked Dan my questions. That report is for transparency to the public.
But a lot of times we notice that the I words used a lot when it should be we. Because we know what, you always come on and say what you think, but I would never get to hear what Tommy thinks, what Frank thinks and what Darlene thinks or what Ron thinks. Sometimes we want to hear what they have to think too. You know? And we don't get, we don't, I just think, I personally would like to see more involvement of all the supervisors during these meetings as opposed to just the chairperson leading the meeting, which I understand you're supposed to do. I don't have a problem with that. But at some point, shouldn't we be discussing things? You know, before, because it's like we come in here and you vote, okay, second, first, and we're out the door in a half hour.
No, so hold on, because you're really, I don't say attacking me right now, but you're coming out.
No, I'm not attacking you.
Hold on, hold on, let, I listen.
I'm saying some things that bother me.
I sat back and listened to you, so now I want you and the rest of the public to understand what actually happens. Board members, with the exception of Darlene, and I'm not calling you out intentionally, I'm just stating facts, who won't take my phone call. I do not ever put anything on the agenda without making sure that my board members are comfortable with it. Don, or Tom called Don this morning and added, or was it Friday? And added the discussion item of the, um, of discussed future capital road improvement projects. Did he call me? No. Do I, hold on. Do I care? No. Do I call Frank? Do I call Ron? Do I call Tom? Do I send information?
Like to see you do that.
You want to, you would sit in, next to me in my pocket all day long if you, yes.
See, I think you're overdramatizing it.
Hold on.
I don't mean that nitpicky.
Hold on. Frank, do I call you all the time and bring you up to speed on stuff?
See, you're doing it to me the same thing you do to the other supervisors that I have a problem with. You get too defensive and it's not, I don't mean it.
We get it.
I don't mean it in a, in a mean way. I'm just saying as a person, as a taxpayer who's sitting out there and watching all this, we would like to see some more input from all the supervisors.
But Kathy, she gives everyone the opportunity on every item. Is there any discussion?
Well, I've seen her tell you to be quiet. Doesn't that bother you?
Ain't the first woman told me to be quiet.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, that's just my opinion. That and fifty cents will buy you a cup of coffee or half a cup.
Anybody else?
My name is Darla, Darla Bowman-Monaco. I live at ten Bayberry Lane in Cecil. Um, I have a question. Did you, did the, did the township understand that the county hauling was not going to mail out any bills? That everything would be online? And if that's a fact, then what about the people who don't own computers and don't do that? I, I don't, I don't get any bills online. And I called them last Monday and asked them to send me a bill. I left a message, left my name. No one returns my call, no one said anything to me. Um, I got one bill since January in the mail. I mean, I don't think, I, I just think that it's unfair to the people who don't have access to that kind of equipment. That if we want to mail bill, that they should be able to do that for us. I don't think that should cost any extra for this township to mail out a bill. I mean, I have issues with that and when I, I did express my opinion on, on Facebook and tons of people said the same thing.
So before I answer, so I don't get yelled at, is anybody else? Does anybody else want to answer?
They've been sending me a bill. I've got one in January, one in April.
Did you? I got none. And I did call them and ask them for one.
So I did too. And actually, Don and I sat down with them because we heard that from a number of people.
Yeah.
They said they mailed them on March twenty-third.
I didn't.
I know. I did get one in the mail, so did Don, so did Frank. So I don't know why some people got them.
I mean, I will call again, but if I have an issue, I might have to get some help here.
Yeah.
And, uh, second of all is I drove down behind a truck the other day that was taking recyclable. And when I tell you, and you guys, do you guys pay for the bins that we pick up here?
Yes.
They were tossing them, emptying and throwing them. So, I mean, so if you have a lot of people who come back to you and say their bins are broke, that's where they're broke from. I just, you know. And just on behalf of the supervisors here, is every, and I know this because I've been in government. But when you discuss personnel, wages or otherwise has to be done behind closed doors.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to, excuse me. Uh, I've been getting text messages, especially from Lawrence. They have not been getting a bill. And I think it's partly because they do not have post office boxes on their bills. They may be being sent back, but there's a few customers from Lawrence that have not gotten a bill from county hauling. And they're afraid to death it's going to happen. When they do get one, it's going to be the whole year's amount.
It, it won't be. We, if you can get whoever's texting you's information to Teresa, she has.
Does she have the post office box numbers for these people that live in the village of Lawrence? That have post office boxes only?
Well, don't they have their post office box?
The county hauling's sending the bills, but they're, they're not being delivered because the postmaster won't put them in unless they got the post office box on the letter.
So the people who are texting you, when they text you, get their full address, including their post office box. And then give Teresa the name, the address and the post office box so that they can switch it.
So Teresa's the contact person for county hauling?
She's been handling our communication between county hauling, yes.
Okay, because I told them to get in touch with you.
They, I can do it too.
Okay.
I can, and I do, I do also do it too. But if, I didn't think you would want to, to have people call me. If you want to have people call me, I can do it or Teresa can do it, either one.
And I want to clear one thing. I do get text messages. You can text me anytime, any time of the day, night, weekend or whatever. As far as keeping me informed, I got an email address. That's right. I don't take phone calls.
Okay. I was up at three AM. I can text you at three AM if you want.
You can, definitely.
Um.
Especially being that you're out campaigning now, who knows how long you're out.
Oh, it's been rough, but that's a whole other issue. Um.
That's why, yeah, that's why I know that you got to take a moment to unwind and, and take a deep breath.
Good advice. Um, any other comments, citizens' comments? Come on up.
A lot of people here know me, a lot of people don't. I'm a concerned citizen. There's a, uh, Facebook page out there that I'm sure everybody's aware of. That they're dogging this township. Everybody in the township that's running for supervisor, manager. I used to work in the oil field. Now, well, first of all, that is a laughing stock, Cecil Township. That's a joke. I don't know if anybody here is, uh, on that. Cecil Township. That's a joke. I don't know if anybody here is, uh, on that, but I have a, I used to be in the oil field and we used to get terroristic threats from all over the country. And I, uh, worked with the IT department to get, uh, IP addresses. And, um, I have them here. Whoever's on that IP address, I got three of them, and I give them 24 hours to shut that website down before I turn these over to authorities. So, I gotta say.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you state your name for the record?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I was taking a note.
Terry Live.
Thank you. Um, any other comments or questions from the audience? We're gonna go to executive session, executive session to discuss two items, personnel and, uh, the West End legal challenge.
Tommy went, left.
He left?
Yes.
Like the whole, why? We weren't done. Okay, whatever. Go ahead, Darlene.
Okay, uh, old business. Uh, and I guess it was brought up the last meeting about the wildlife in Muse and, uh, it's still a problem. And, uh, the nuisance control officer last fall missed or didn't get a couple of the skunks or whatever that's running around there now. And Pepe has taken over the Muse mascot and they posted that all over their Facebook page and is looking for a soulmate. Residents of Muse, if you are in need of a reliable trapper, there's that Dan Koala. And his phone number is 412-296-0563. And anybody can reach out to him and he can give them a price, uh, as to trapping them cause he's licensed with the Game Commission.
Did you put that on that Muse Facebook page?
Yes. No, and I, they, they had it on the Muse, but they, that's where I got this information, was from them. And they asked me if I could just convey this.
Okay. Anything else?
I'd like to comment, you know, we hired him for like a one-month contract.
Right.
And I think the catches were somewhere around, what, two dozen, Cindy?
Something like that. I could get the exact number.
Postrons, groundhogs. I, I think it was success for that time of year. And I would not be against maybe rehiring in the future if I see another, you know, epidemic or problem throughout the community. Um, but if they wanna hire like Dan, that's fine. I'm all with that too.
The thing of it is, Frank, is if these people are really plagued with it and they're willing to pay a trapper to, out of their pocket to, to get rid of these animals because they are such a nuisance, why should we pick up the bill?
I agree with you, Darlene. I, I-
I mean, really and truthfully, when you think about it.
Cause then how do we not do it for Lawrence or Gilmore or like Se, like Cecil or like, it becomes this thing where all of a sudden we, we're a trapping business in the township instead of-
There, there was a severe problem there.
There was.
Yes.
There was.
And it's, the skunks are during the day now. I, I didn't think they came out during the day. They're usually at night.
And there was even some road kills.
I saw a skunk on my patio like two days ago. I don't know what's going on. They're taking over Cecil. Maybe Pepe's girlfriend's at my house.
Now, there's one other thing that I would like to set, is another date for the zoning workshop.
About what?
To set another date so that we can continue the zoning map.
Okay. Can we do that when Tom is here or email and we'll get something scheduled? Cause I don't wanna schedule it and then have him not be able to attend. So, email Dawn some dates that you're available and then we-
I'm available anytime you guys can make it.
All right, so we'll get something circulated and get that scheduled, but I don't wanna do it without all board members here. Anything else?
Hey, Bill.
That's it.
Why aren't they supposed to set a new pole on every, on the Polly Road?
That's gonna start tomorrow.
Tomorrow, they're gonna switch it.
Well, tomorrow, Wednesday, I was like, tomorrow, they're gonna start.
So, they're gonna switch that pole to the other side of the road?
They're gonna reset a pole. They're gonna put a new pole in. We come off of that pole and then we move it.
Then we can go forward with the Polly Road?
Yeah, we'll start moving forward. We have, we're, we're working on, uh, the alignment right now with the wall. We met with Mr. Iskey out there last week.
Okay.
Joe, Joe, myself, and Dawn, better than I for the last week, so.
I'd love to get that project wrapped up.
Yeah, we're moving. It's just a slow process.
Yeah.
Probably, and stuff like that. So, we did that, we did that. Then we started going to the side.
Okay.
Yeah, the board authorized us to put the one piece out the bid, Ron. We're ready to go to put that out the bid. We just need to square, we wanna be squared away with Iskey and, and we also need Cindy's help to go back and talk to Birdie.
We can, we'll do that. Let's, talk to me for a second after the meeting.
What are you putting on for the paving? Or is that Amity?
What's that?
What are you putting on for bid? The paving or the wall?
The widening and the re, and the driveways, adjusting the driveways.
Okay.
I mean, it'll have a little bit of paving in it, but, you know.
Bill.
Amity's gonna do the rest, right?
Have we heard from, um, Amity yet on, um, Sycamore Beach Street Muse?
No, uh, we're not, as a college, we're waiting for them to give us a, a start date.
Okay.
We did some preliminary work on Sycamore. We had a couple amendments we wanted to get at, head of that, uh, paving operation up. We got our work in the last week, so.
Good.
Right again, the, uh, Sycamore at Beach.
Great, thanks.
And A- Amity just paved the whole Gladon Road, all the way over to the Well Pad. Uh, Range Resource paid for it.
I think, I think, uh, Grange is, uh, that morning.
Grange?
Grange, yes.
Yeah, till June. I know, right? Although it feels like November, end of November out there. Oh, oh, yeah, you never brought up summer help.
Oh, summer help.
Yeah.
I have, uh, a returning, uh, Rick's son is returning from last summer. He's a sophomore in this school. We always keep our, our students, we have, uh, colleagues, and then we have another gentleman, Andrew Alderson. We have an application, or that's the only other application that we got. So, I'm requesting the organization to have it start on the 15th also. So, we'll both start on the 15th.
We need to take, do we need to take a vote on that? Probably not for summer help, right? Okay. Anybody have a public comment before we add that to the agenda? Take a vote to add, what's his name? I'm sorry.
Andrew Alderson, A-L-D-P.
We have to add it to the agenda. Okay, so we're gonna add, um, hiring Andrew Alderson to the agenda for summer help. All those in favor, please signa, or, do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have to, well, hold on. We just added it to the agenda. Now, we have to take a vote on it. Uh, do I have a motion to approve hiring Andrew Alderson?
Alderson.
Alderson.
I make a motion.
At what, fifteen dollars an hour for summer help?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're welcome. Sorry. All these form outlets. It does look really good, so.
So, we're going, uh, cutting, we're here for directions up there. It's finally settling back down after the winter heat, you know, so it's really coming back.
Thank you. You guys do an awesome job.
Well, thank you.
We get compliments all the time about it.
Well, Rick takes, uh, great pride in cutting that, when he does, you know. So, then I can supplement the parts and stuff with my, my, uh, regular guns. And that's why I'm happy to use the tools. Thank you, because our pro guys back on the road.
Sounds good. Um, if only I could get my own kids to cut my own grass.
Like, I found a patch of twenty-dollar bill to the end.
Just let, like a fishing pull onto their heads, like dangling it.
That was, uh, that was thirty years ago. It's probably a fifty now.
No, no way. My kids work for free. They get a roof over their head. That's what they get.
One, one more thing. And this, this is very dangerous. As you drive through Cecil, you see more trees laying across the road, just laying on top of the wires. I mean, I know it's not our responsibility, but-
Uh, but we contact them and, uh, communication companies, unless, unless the line services are interrupted.
So, are we documenting though that we're, we should document that we're calling them because if, you know, God forbid, that tree actually falls onto somebody, we could-
They, they usually call the police and we do make a report, but just like Bill, we call, they will knock them out.
As long as we have it documented that we're trying.
Police report usually.
Shaun, didn't that lady get hit by a tree on 980?
What?
But that was storms, I believe. It, it's not just going on the wires. It's probably just again, a storm taking a tree off.
These trees are everywhere laying on lines, all the way across the center of the line.
Yep.
We, we try to be proactive. I mean, we'll get something out there and kind of bring in our, but, I mean, again, I'm, at the bar there, but-
Yeah.
And they usually send two guys out there that, uh, operate with certified, um, uh, about, and they're always very good. It's a good working relationship. If there's something, it's in, you know, in a danger of coming down, we'll get to it. Then we get our own equipment. Kinda wanna do that until we have, best to do that.
Soon.
It's best that we hold on.
Soon.
Yes, soon.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions or comments by the board? This meeting is adjourned.